Okay, it's 7:34 PM. We'll call the meeting of the Wellington Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Commissioners present, myself, John T. Hen, Rebecca Sanofsky, Bob Shabbitt, Doug Roberts, Joe Hall. Have I missed anyone? I don't think so. So that's enough for a quorum?
Yes, sir. We only need four.
Yeah, okay. So. Applications to be received. Mike, do we have any applications being received tonight?
No new applications to be received.
Okay, then item D on our agenda, public hearing. It's my understanding that the applicant has requested a continuance on this. Mike, your thoughts?
Correct. Yep, we received requests this afternoon for a continuance. So this will be. The opening of the public hearing will be postponed until the second meeting in June. So our next meeting will be because we meet on the first and third Tuesday. So they have a conflict for the seventh, so it'll be pushed to the second meeting in June.
Would that be the 21st?
Yep, and I just want to, I'm gonna pull up the, the letter that we received, just so I can read it. Everybody's on the same page here. Give me one second. Okay. So this was received today by. Thomas Cody, who is the attorney representing the application, and he's requesting this letter to respectfully request the commission postpone the opening of the hearing until the June 21st, 2022 meeting. So. We just need a motion to postpone opening the hearing until June 21st.
You're muted, Bob, but I think you just said so moved.
You read my lips. Perfect.
Hi.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, moving on then. New business? Do we have no business this evening?
Sorry, one second. We do not have any new business.
Okay. And item F, unfinished business, affordable housing claim.
So. The portion of the plan that's prepared. I sent out to you guys with the agenda and a word document for you to. Take a look at and either mark up, or if you have comments or questions for me, we can, we can go over it. I know that this is a little bit more lengthy than what we normally send out. So if you haven't had a chance to dig in. You know, the expectation wasn't that we were going to hash all that out tonight, just sort of a first, first opportunity for you guys to take a look. So if you have comments or questions, we can go over those now. But if you'd like a little more time to go through all that, we can. Leave this on the agenda for the next meeting.
Yeah, personally, I'd like to read the entire document, and I haven't had time to do that myself. Any other commissioners want to weigh in on that?
Oh, yeah, I'd like to table it till our next meeting.
Okay, so I'll email you my comments, Michael, so then we can all talk. When we, when we meet on it next time, you'll have, you'll have my comments. If you want to answer them before next meeting, fine.
Yeah, absolutely. So if anybody wants to send over questions or comments or thoughts, then we can. You know, we can include them if there's a couple of you that have the same type of question or whatever, and I can work some something up for the next meeting. So we'll just leave this on the agenda.
Okay, do we need a motion for that or just leave it?
Nope, you're good.
Okay. All right, so. Next approval of minutes from May 3rd. I've only just started reading them myself. Has anybody else gotten through the minutes on May 3rd?
I'm good with them.
Good as well.
I did.
I would move that we accept them.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of accepting the meetings, the meeting minutes from May 3rd as written? Say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Abstentions?
Abstention to Joe Hall. Yep. I didn't have a chance to review.
Okay, Joe Hall abstained. Okay. Correspondence, Mike, any new correspondence?
No new correspondence.
Right. Item I, public comment. The commission will hear brief comments at this time from anyone wishing to speak. No business can be conducted here, nor can any comments be made about any items on the agenda. Is there any public comment this evening?
I see Erica's hand up.
Thank you, John. Erica Wischinsky for Selectwoman. I just wanted to know if the commission had considered. Either moving to a hybrid or in-person meetings.
I believe that we have discussed this. Mike, we've discussed either doing hybrid or moving to in-person, correct?
Yeah, we talked about. We last discussed it and said we were gonna wait until whatever happened with the law at the end of April. We haven't had a chance to discuss it as of yet. So we, I can't remember what the consensus of the commission was last time. But we can certainly have that discussion at some point. We can have it at the next meeting, even if you want.
Yeah, why don't we put that on the agenda for the, for the next meeting beginning of June?
Okay.
Any other public comment at this time? Any other public comment?
I see Kathy Demers.
Okay.
Hi, good evening, everyone.
Hi Kathy.
Hi, Kathy Demers, 48 Mason Road. I just have a couple of questions. My first question is regarding Love's Travel Stop. I know several meetings ago, there was a question about the canopy design. Not conforming to the original application, and I know Mike was supposed to be in touch with the applicant or the developers, and I wondered if we'd heard back on that.
I can, I can respond to that. Yes, so. After the wrong canopy was installed, we worked for a bit with the architect on. Making sure that the color that was going to be transitioned, it was going to be transitioned to would match the facade of the building per the, per the approval. And so we find, we found something that works. So there, that should be fabricated. It's already been ordered, and it should be going up shortly.
Okay, thank you. May I ask another question, not unrelated to the travel stop? Just in general, when the Planning and Zoning Commission decides to look at new regulations or adopting new regulations. Do they generally get reviewed by our town attorney, our land use attorney?
Um. I'm trying to think. Not, not typically. It's not, it's not something that's typically done for just a boilerplate. If there's a specific, there's something that's specifically being. Trying to be achieved or a specific question, I suppose we could, but it's, it's not been. The practice, at least recently, that I can recall.
Okay, again, just as a resident, I'd suggest that perhaps the commission consider that in the future. You know, just raising that question, especially when you're adopting new regulations. And then the last question I have is, when there's a pre-application conference that is held with a potential applicant. Is there a written or oral report given to the Planning and Zoning Commission members?
I can, I guess I can respond to that. If there's a, a pre-application meeting that's had by staff, no. We don't inform the commission on a regular basis of those because. Generally, some of them make it to the commission, others don't. If it's, if it's an informal discussion that ultimately goes to the commission, obviously, at that point, they would know, or an application, but not otherwise.
Just a follow-up question on that. So if staff is the ones that are, are meeting with the applicant. How is it decided upon what other resources to bring into that meeting? For example. The fire department. You know, safety, personnel, other resources from the town, because I know there's an option to bring those into these pre-applications, so.
We would look at, if someone says they want to have a meeting to talk about submitting an application for a house, then, then we would say, okay, let's talk to. You know, these folks need to consult Eastern Highlands. If somebody asks. You know, to bring an application for a use permit, or someone wants to do whatever, we would make the resources available based upon whatever. Type of application and what they were talking to us about.
Okay, and so staff would decide?
Staff would just, yeah, I mean, we, we would, we would include the folks that needed to be included, included based upon whatever was, was being discussed.
And. Are there, is there ever a time that the Planning and Zoning Commission members would be invited to be part of a pre-application meeting?
So I, what I will say, number one, is this feels a lot like an app, a question related to an application on the agenda, but number two. We can't include planning and zoning on pre-application meetings because then they'd be predetermined on the application.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just asking general questions. That's all. I'm not fishing, believe me. Thank you. Thanks for all your time and effort, everyone.
Any other member of the public wish to make a comment at this time?
John, I would. Ralph Tulis, 47 Villas Hill Road.
Hey Ralph, sure, go ahead.
Something I caught on some previous minutes that I want to point out to you. The minutes of March 1st. And unfortunately, there's no page numbers on these minutes. BZ 22 dash four. The very end of the. Public hearing minutes. It's noted that Mr. Parcells' motion to close the public hearing, John T. Hen seconded. All in favor? Motion passed. Yet, when you go to the March 15th meeting, we have another public hearing on that same application. So the minutes are inaccurate. And I'm disappointed that no member of the commission caught that.
Mike, was that the public hearing that we held over for a second meeting? There was one. I believe it was the March-April that was held over between two meetings because there were some questions. The commission had for the applicant and needed to be addressed.
The applicant was the commission.
We did also hold a couple of things over Ralph.
I understand, I understand. But if you're looking at the official record, the public hearing was held twice. That's my only point, which is not quite accurate. Now, responding to Kathy's comment. About pre-applications. And I'm referring to zoning regulations, not a specific application, but a specific section of the zoning regulations. And one of the things stated in those regulations. As far as supporting materials, staff report of pre-application conference is to be included with the application. So to, to not document what staff discusses with an applicant in a pre-application. Conference is not very helpful to the whole process. I'm just offering an opinion. That's really all I've got to say right now.
Okay, so Mike, should you think we should go back through the meeting of March 1st and see if we need to change the minutes and amend the minutes?
Yeah, I can. I mean, I can pull them and we can take a look. I can send. I can send them out with the next agenda. So if you guys want to look at. That with this, and then if there's any modifications that you want to make, when we do minutes. Approval of minutes under the agenda, you can just discuss those changes at that point.
Okay, that sounds good. And then I would agree that any, any pre-application meetings, we should get a heads up of what was discussed and with whom. I don't know if that's part of your practices now, but I would agree with Ralph that we should have that.
The problem we run into is if I, if I, if staff makes the commission aware of an app, of a pre-application meeting. Then anything that happens ahead of the application is not part of the record. So if, so if we have a public hearing on an application, prior to the public hearing being opened, if I say, hey, guys, we had this meeting with. Dollar General, and they think they want to put a building in on this piece of property. If that discussion happens before the hearings open, then the folks that attend the meeting. Aren't privy to those conversations. And the commission is in a position as well, where if it's not part of the public hearing. You cannot use what you learn or understand, or any impressions you, you take from that, in making your decision when you vote on the application. So that doesn't mean that. Discussion about a pre-application conference won't occur, could occur in writing or verbally. We, I could tell you about it during the public hearing. I could write a staff report. Any of that can happen. But it has to be included as part of the public hearing for you to be able to use it to make your decision. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that, that would be my suggestion is that if there was a pre-application meeting, that we just, when we open the public hearing on it, we should get a notification. At that time of the, of what happened in any pre-application meeting. Does that make sense?
Yep, totally agree.
Okay, John, that is really consistent with what your regulations say, because that, that is something that's supposed to be included with the application. By the applicant. So when, when you open a public hearing, you will get to see what that pre-application conference consisted of. So it's still, still something that's still in the public hearing context. It is not a situation where you're prejudging an application. Now, one of the things that we did when I was chairman is, we would very often have a preliminary discussion about a. A special permit application with the proviso that it's no holds barred, but no obligations implied. And we would have a frank and open discussion with an applicant with the understanding that we are just kicking around ideas, and none of that. Is, is binding until the application actually comes through the door and we start the process with a public hearing. And that seemed to work very well. Just some thoughts.
That almost sounds like you're prejudging again what Mike was talking about. We don't want to do that.
I don't think it was ever considered prejudging. I would run that by an attorney if you think it is.
So there's two things that are being discussed here. A report or, or, or a brief provided by staff. Of a, of an applicant who at some point came to Town Hall to discuss their project is one thing. That would be something that. We would, we would inform the commission of during the application. We wouldn't do it ahead of time because we don't know if they're ever going to apply and what that application would look like. An informal discussion where an applicant comes before the commission during a meeting and says, hey, I'm thinking about doing this. I'm not really sure. Can you give me some feedback? Is what Ralph is referring to. The statutes allow for the second one and expressly. Protect both parties from any discussions being non-binding. But that is not a pre-application conference where someone shows up and says, hey, I'm going to submit this application, and I want to talk to you before I do. Because in this case, you know, we've got 62 people in the room. If that pre-application conference had been held with the commission. That discussion would not have been part of the public hearing, and none of the folks in attendance. Who are interested in knowing about this application would know what that discussion sounded like. So. Again, having a lot of discussion about something which is, you know, not related to something on the agenda, but is awfully similar. If folks are ultimately interested in any discussion that was, that staff had regarding an application, that's absolutely going to be part of the public hearing.
Okay, Mike, well, I appreciate your, your clarifying the distinction between the two because I think it's, it's really relevant. And. Particularly both, well, both for the public and for the commission members as to how to handle these things. And obviously, no one wants to prejudge an application. But on the other hand, if you want to offer encouragement to someone who has yet to apply, and you do have. A conversation about, you know, just sketchy things about what they would like to do. With a clear understanding that nothing is binding, I think that can be very helpful, both for the commission and for the applicant. The details get worked out in the pre-application conference that you're talking about, Mike. That's my thinking.
Yeah, this is Andy. Just to clarify, just so I'm sure I understand. Historically, prior to an application being submitted, you can talk about anything because you don't have an application, and we've done those in the public forum. After the application, everything is on the public record, and nothing should be done without documentation. Am I, I mean, that's the way I always understood it. When there's no application, it's just a conversation. I want to build a skyscraper, you know, downtown Willy's, you know, right on the town, great. Okay, let's talk about that. And once the, but so that you can say anything you want. Nothing's binding. It's just a free-form discussion. And the instant that application gets submitted, then everything is part of the public record. I just stated that twice, just to make sure I understand what I'm saying. That is that, am I right about that? That's kind of the loose way that I interpret the regulations. Correct me where I'm wrong. So. Yeah, once the application's then in, I'd say everything has to be documented. But maybe I'm off.
Well, I guess Ralph, thanks for your input.
You're welcome.
Mike, what do you, what do you think of Andy's comments?
Yeah, you know, once an application is submitted, any discussion has to happen at the table here during the meeting. I think there's a bit of a nuance related to whether something is truly informal. I'm kicking this around. What do you think? We're looking for feedback versus. I'm gathering the information related to an application I'm going to submit. And there's a nuance there. Which is, you know, again, asking for. Guidance from the commission as to whether or not what they want to do has any. Any, any weight with the commission. If the commission thinks it's a great idea or a terrible idea, and we've done a few of those. Where the applicant truly is not guided as far as what they want to do, and they want the commission to make. It clearer to them. But if, if, if somebody shows up and they are intending to submit an application. And they, they know what that is. They know what they want to seek approval for. They know what the, the application is going to look like and what they need to do. That information. Should, should only be discussed once we have an application, which is what Andy mentioned.
So Mike, what you're really saying is they're coming to you to try to get some help to dot the i's, cross the t's on the application and get that in. And I get that. That's a discussion that's behind closed doors and doesn't go to the commission as a whole until you actually have an application in front of you and you start a public hearing. Am I correct so far?
Right, so.
It's stuck in your head, so that looks good.
We, we, we would say this is something that you really need to talk to the health department first. We'll have the engineer look at this. Maybe we need to, you know, look at, at this issue, or so based on that, we will workshop the various criteria. You know, and, and basically guide them through the application process, but I'm not. Giving them strategy on behalf of the commission about what, what we think we want or what they ought to do. It's, it's really just the nuts and bolts of the, the logistics of an application.
Memory serves, we've had pre-application meetings. And then we got the actual application, and it didn't really represent what we discussed. And I mean, this is going back 10 years, you know, several years, but. So, you know, the applicants, they're, they're, they're in good faith. We're giving them to the best of our ability advice of good faith. Then we get the actual application, and it doesn't really match. So it's like, all right, I don't remember if it was approved or declined or approved of conditions, but. Again, those pre-application meetings were simply conversations, but they were in the public forum, and they were in the minutes. So it wasn't like it, nothing. It wasn't like it was done in secret.
Okay, Ralph, are you all set? Okay, any other member of the public wish to make a comment at this time?
Kathy still has her hand up. Kathy still has her hand up.
Kathy, did you want to be recognized again or no?
Yes, please. Just to follow up with the discussion everyone's having about a preliminary consideration. I just want to go back to our town regs, section 12.03. 12.03 point 01. I'd like to read it if you'll indulge me for just a minute because it clarifies this. The Wellington Planning and Zoning Commission recommends that prior to the submission of an official application. For a design development zone approval. The applicant initiate a pre-application conference with the commission. And subsequently, prepare and present a preliminary plan for informal consideration by the commission. The preparation of the preliminary plan is recommended to facilitate. The general consideration of factors and problems affecting the development of the land before the applicant proceeds with the official application. And the preparation of final maps, plans, and documents required for formal consideration by the commission. The presentation of a preliminary plan will more readily and economically facilitate alterations and changes recommended by the commission. Neither the pre-app conference nor the formal consideration of the preliminary plan. Shall be deemed to constitute any portion of the official and formal procedure of applying for a change of zone. Or preliminary site development and land use concept plan approval. Neither the proponent nor the. Commission shall be in any way bound by statements made in such informal discussions. Their purpose being only to minimize delay, expense, and inconvenience to the public, the proponent, and the commission upon the future receipt, if any. Of a formal application for design development zone. So I don't, I don't know if that helps to clarify in terms of what the regs state.
I don't think that's related to what Mike was talking about with the pre-application. Being that someone comes to Town Hall and wants to talk about maybe output of this application. You know, certainly, it's, it sounds like it's certainly a best practice that we should absolutely want to have. Conferences like that for, for a major project coming up. But if Mike is getting a pre-application, I don't think that really has much to do with that whole process.
Okay.
Am I right, Mike, or no?
Yeah. I don't, maybe I'm not explaining it clearly. I'm trying to make sure that we answer folks' questions, but there's, there's a difference between what comes before the commission and what comes in next step. I mean, we meet with. A dozen people a month. A dozen people a month, you know, so those are, those are regarding potential future applications that may or may not come to fruition.
Well, I I understand what you're saying. I'm just saying that the terminology used is preapplication conference. It's in the regs. So perhaps you're. Describing two different situations, but you're using the same terminology in the reg, so it can become confusing. Thank you.
Any other member of the public wish to make a comment at this time? Going once. Any other member of the public? Okay. Moving on. We've all we have left is. Staff report discussion, regulations governing cannabis establishments.
So that I just put that on there, just as a reminder that we have the. The application or the public hearing coming up, so that'll be for June. So there's nothing, no action required. It was referred to CROG. We got our CROG comments back. I think we talked about this the last meeting. So there'll be an upcoming public hearing. This is just a a note. Reminder.
Okay. Then with that, I think the meeting is adjourned. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I moved.
That can moved. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Bob Shabat second. And all in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Bye.
Bye.
Okay, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.